Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the action meeting for the North Penn School District School Board. We're going to start the evening with a video, I believe.
The North Penn School District staff is hard at work this summer preparing for the new school year. Renovation projects are taking place across the district, including extensive work on the modulars at Pembroke Middle School and the installation of a new roof at Nash Elementary. The facilities crew in every building is working diligently to clean every corner of their facility for the incoming students and staff this fall. And the administrative and teaching staff is also immersed in training and learning opportunities this summer. The educators attended the night shift, a professional leadership development opportunity, while the administrative staff also attended their annual Leadership Academy. And finally, the North Penn Educational Foundation is holding the Second Annual Build-A-Bag School Supply Drive. You can donate new school supplies in any of the donation boxes throughout the community, and you can find more information on our website at npenn.org/billedabag. Everything that is happening right now throughout the district is to provide the very best educational experience for every North Penn student each and every day. We are all very excited to see the students on the first day of school, Tuesday, September 3rd. And that is all for this North Penn news update. Be sure to go to our website at npenn.org to find out all of the latest information and news. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are going to kick off our evening tonight by doing some proclamations and honoring some student groups. Who are we starting with tonight?
We have our girls' spring track.
Girls' Spring Track is going to be our first group. We're going to welcome Kyle Richard to speak. Thank you. Dr. McHugh, if you want to start and have a go around.
Seventh place at the district meet as well, and she's got a great future with the North Penn track team. Jamie Daidell. Anise Williams just finished her junior year. She had an incredible season. She really started to develop that leadership role that we're looking forward to seeing even more of as a senior next year with us. She was incredible at our league championship. She actually carried the team and did a lot of great things with many first places and I believe won second place, finished at the league meet, which was awesome for us. We needed every bit of that. Carried that success to the district meet. And then at State, she was on our four-by-one, our seventh-place four-by-one team. She was fifth in the triple jump and then sixth in the 300 hurdles. Anise Williams.
Congratulations, Anise. Good job.
Sierra G., also another key component to our success as a track team this year. Sierra was able to do a lot of different things for us. She was a very key part in our league championship. She was a great asset to us when we went to districts, and she came with us to the State meet as well. Ready to jump in if there is any point which we could have used her in any of our relays because she's talented in many different areas, which is awesome for any coach to have a runner like Sierra on our team. Sierra G.
Congratulations, Sierra. Nice job.
Jamie Carrado. Jamie Carrado just finished her sophomore year as well. Jamie, like Sierra, was a key part at all of our championships that we went to. And when I say ready to jump in at any moment, we were on the track, ready to run. We had a girl that couldn't run in our four-by-one relay, and we were already on the track, and Jamie had to run on the track and quickly run in that at the State meet, which is not easy to do, but she did a phenomenal job. She was on our four-by-one at the State meet, and she's got a bright future as well with us also. Jamie Carrado.
Anise and Jamie. Nice job. Good thinking.
Finally, a great addition to our team this year. Her first year on our team. She just finished her, I want to say junior year, just finished her junior year with us. Aleah Allen. She, again, just like the rest of these ladies, was a huge part to our championship success. She ran the four-by-one at State. She ran the four-by-four, our fifth-place four-by-four team at State as well. She's got a really bright year ahead of her, and we're looking forward to seeing what she can do to finish out her North Penn career. Aleah Allen.
Congratulations, Aleah. Love the name.
And briefly, I will announce a couple of ladies that were unable to make it. Rachel Allmark, Megan Gambogi, Elena Faison, Kelly Gilmore, and Sophia Broadhurst were also key components to this year's track and field team. Thank you very much.
Great team. Thanks for the leadership.
All right. The next group that we're going to honor this evening is the 2019 Future Business Leaders of America, North Penn High School. And Linda Westerlund is going to speak on their behalf. Welcome, guys.
Good evening. I am Linda Westerlund. These are students from the Future Business Leaders of America. One of the things these students get to do is they compete in various business-related events. We have everything from accounting, business law, personal finance, to performance events like job interview, public speaking, and sales presentation. We have computer events like spreadsheets and database, and we have team events like mobile application development and management information services. We start competing at the local level. If they place high enough, they go on to region. After region, it's the State Conference, and then hopefully on to Nationals. This summer, we did compete in San Antonio, Texas, so several of these students here did get to advance. I always hate that we are an event that culminates in the summer because I have numerous students who aren't able to attend. I just hope they're somewhere fun. So I am going to read, though, every student's name. We'll start with Nicole Albright. She placed first in the State in spreadsheet applications. Then we have Logan DeVille. He placed first in the State in sales presentation. But Logan is also the only student we've ever had from North Penn that was an officer for two years in a row. So he was a State Officer last year, and then this past year, he served as the State President of Pennsylvania FBI. Jared Huzar placed first in agribusiness. He is not here tonight, but he also did compete at the national level. Emily Liu placed second in the State in business communication. She did go on, and she placed second in the National in San Antonio. So she also competed there. Allison Yang placed second in the State in fashion marketing. There's also some open events that they have that are state-only events. She placed sixth in human resources management and ninth in business calculations. So Allison was busy. Nick Cattalde, he placed third in sports and entertainment management and also competed at the National Conference. And that event was a team event. So Evan Sternbach was also on that team with Nick, placing third and also competed at the national level. Deanne Chang placed third in advertising. She did compete at the national level where she was interviewed and selected to serve as an intern. So she did get the internship position and worked the National Conference. Connie Jang placed third in agribusiness, and in the open event, she placed sixth in social media marketing, seventh in human resource management. Chris Killian placed third in economics, and he did compete at the national level as well. Sasha Sadak placed third in fashion marketing. Ben Curley placed fourth in mobile app development. Neely Vellinger placed fourth in mobile app development. And Neely did compete at the National Conference. And I do just want to point out, Neely was the one that was awarded the Congressional Award that went to Washington, DC in May. That was for an application he developed the previous year, but he did get recognized for that. Adida Dadi placed fifth in impromptu speaking, and Adida did also compete in San Antonio. Divya Sud placed seventh in FBI Creed and Code of Ethics. Kevin Nguyen placed ninth in cybersecurity. And Sam Lee placed tenth place in business calculations. And that's it.
Great. Congratulations, Linda. Come on around. All right. And our last group that we'll be honoring this evening is the North Penn High School, what is it, the Thespians? Our Thespians. Pete Nicholson will be presenting on behalf of Andrea Roney. So come on in, folks.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting the members of the North Penn High School Theater and Thesbian Troop 546th floor to this evening's meeting in recognition for their achievements during the 2018-19 school year. As Mr. Fusco said, my name is Pete Nicholson, the principal of North Penn High School, presenting on behalf of Mrs. Andrea Roney, the teacher, producer, and co-director of the North Penn High School Theater and Thespians, who is unable to attend this evening due to being in Washington, DC, participating in the Educational Theater Association's Theater Education Advocacy Day. The 2018-19 school year was a memorable one for the students with us tonight. They represent all the members of the Thesbian Troop and MPHS Theater who participated in this year's Philly AIDS Walk and raised $1,600, participated in the Trick or Treat So Tots Can Eat International Thesbian Society Initiative, and collected over 1,600 pounds of food donated to men on Main Street, performed at the 2018 Fall Show Midsummer's Night Dream for about 1,300 patrons, hosted the 2018 Pennsylvania State Thesbian Conference in November and December with over 1,000 state Thespians attending, hosted 100 North Penn Middle School 7th, 8th, and 9th grade Thespians during theater workshops at the high school, hosted the 20th Anniversary Night of Arts Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS Gala and Silent Auction with nearly 300 MPSD theater, art, dance, and music students performing, presented the Spring Musical Mama Mia, represented the North Penn High School District and Community as well as the state of Pennsylvania by presenting a Midsummer's Night Dream at the International Thesbian Festival for two performances on June 28th for 1,800 delegates of the festival. North Penn was one of only 11 productions chosen for this honor, and this is the second time in three years they've had such honor. Both United States Congresswoman Madeleine Dean and Pennsylvania Secretary of Education Pedro A. Rivera sent congratulations to the company of a Midsummer's Night Dream, which I have if anyone wants to see later on. For all of their work in theater production, supported the Pennsylvania State Thesbian Chapter and Conference, and outreach to the MPSD and community, North Penn High School's Thesbian Troop was named a 2018 Pennsylvania Gold Honor Troop by the Pennsylvania State Thesbian Chapter. North Penn Thespians have also contributed to the Pennsylvania State Thesbian Chapter being named a Gold Honor Chapter by the Educational Theater Association for the third year in a row. It's a pleasure to introduce these students tonight, and I'm going to read all 37 names. Unfortunately, though, many of them are unable to be here due to the time of year. As well as being actors in the troop, I'm going to read a few individual accomplishments as we go through. Elijah Baker, sophomore representative. Matthew Barthlamis, junior representative. Madeline Burke, recording secretary. Krishna Shantherath, senior representative. Sierra Cobbs. Leo Cox. Jamin Crosby, activities and fundraising co-coordinator. Victoria Demarat. Christiana Fink. Mary Forbes. Josie Genardi, historian. Olivia Greco. Molly Hostetter, the co-Vice President, who was also PA State Thesbian Officer in 2018, and won national individual event superior at States and qualified to compete at Nationals. Valerie Hummel. Ryan Jacob. Chelsea Killeran. Paul Klemmer, the corresponding secretary. Michael Klitch. Katie Kreis, activities and fundraising co-coordinator, who also was a national individual event superior at States and also won the same award at the National Conference. Mary Catherine Lee. Hy Ming Lu, backstage and technical coordinator. Joshua Meyer. Elizabeth Martin. Gabriella Mosley. Mason Paul. Joe Pop, treasurer. Dylan Prokopio. Kyle Prokopio. Tori Quinn, who was the BCEFA co-coordinator. Sam Santangelo. Emma Steersman, co-Vice President. Sammy Steck, the president and a national individual event superior who qualified for Nationals. Bridget Sweeney. Critty Verma. Ryan Verone. Keenan Washington. And finally, Shannon Wenzel, the BCEFA co-coordinator. Thank you.
All right. Moving along, we are going to now invite audience members who wish to address the board directly. At this time, you may take the podium. As a reminder, please state your name and your address and sign in on the log before you do so. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the board? Going once, going twice. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 20th action meeting? Motion by Mr. DiOzio, seconded by Ms. Ramich. Any thoughts, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So moved. All right. We move on to committee reports. I'll do personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board has not met since the last action meeting on June 20th, 2019. End of report. Finance, Mr. DiOzio. Yeah, Mr. DiOzio.
Finance Committee report. Our next meeting will be August 6th at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. The committee did not meet in July. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, Safe Schools.
Safe Schools Committee did not meet in June. Next meeting will be held this coming Tuesday, July 23rd at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
All right. Folks can expect to hear this about five more times. The Education Community Policy Committee did not meet since the last action meeting on June 20th, 2019. The next meeting will be on July 23rd, 2019. End of report. Facilities and Operations.
Facilities and Operations Committee did not meet in June. July's meeting has recently been canceled, and I did hear from Mr. Kennedy if there are any changes to timelines or budgets that the committee will be made aware of that. The next meeting will be scheduled for August. End of report.
All right. The North Monco Technical Career Center.
Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee has not met since the last action meeting on June 20th, 2019.
And the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit.
The MCIU Board met on June 26th. The Board met to review and discuss program legislative and personnel updates. The next meeting is scheduled for August 28th. End of report.
Thank you. And finally, the North Penn Educational Foundation.
The Foundation Board of Trustees last met on June 24th. At that time, 36 grants for the 2019-2020 school year were approved in the amount of $21,538. Additionally, Match Nonprofit delivered results of a survey recently conducted about the current state of the foundation. Next step is we will be working on a new strategic plan that is aligned with the North Penn School District Comprehensive Plan. I'd like to remind everyone that the Foundation's annual golf outing is being held Monday, October 7th at Pinecrest Golf Course. We are still looking for both golfers and sponsors of this popular event. In addition, the Foundation continues to solicit donations for its Second Annual North Penn Area Community Build-A-Bag Backpack and School Supply Drive. You will find information about the golf outing and school supply drive on the district website. Our next meeting will be August 7th. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. And now, we're going to move on to our much anticipated solicitors report.
I will try and keep it brief. I have a whole bunch of bullet points here, but in the spirit of the prior reports, I'll try and get through them quickly. The Board did meet in an executive session immediately prior to the meeting this evening for the purpose of discussing matters involving the filling of administrative vacancies and receiving information on, but not deliberating, two additional items. In addition to the executive session announcements, with the passage of the state budget, there were a number of new laws that have been enacted that impact schools. So just to give kind of a very quick overview of some of those, one was that the compulsory attendance age has changed. So the ages during which students are required to be in schooling of some sort was expanded. It used to be from age eight to age 17. It is now age six to age 18 in terms of when parents are obligated to have their children attend school, whether it be in the school district, a private school, homeschooling. There's an expanded period of time now. There is also changes to the laws governing the provision of lunch to students. Now, if a student who is not participating in a school lunch program owes more than $50, schools are permitted to provide an alternative lunch to those students, which was not necessarily permitted under the prior version of the law. We also saw a number of, I think, continuing a trend involving school safety, additional requirements for school police officers, school security guards, some additional training requirements that have been put in place that we'll have to review as how those apply to the school district. You'll like the next one, which is additional training for school board members. So for newly elected and re-elected school board members, the amount of training has increased. Compensation, still zero. So, and some of that training involves trauma-informed schools, which is certainly an important topic. And so it will be time well worth it, but you will be spending additional time in training. Along with that, there's also trauma-informed professional development will now be required of teachers as well, to the extent that that wasn't taking place. And then perhaps the change that's received the most attention so far is in addition to the school code of flexible instructional days, with the idea being that schools may apply to the Department of Education to be permitted to provide up to five days of quote-unquote "flexible instruction" that meet the 180-day requirement. It's received the most media attention in terms of snow days and schools being able to provide instruction. There are a number of requirements associated with that. It's an application process that the Department of Education will need to review those requests from school districts. The law doesn't actually go into effect really until September, and because of some deadlines in the statute in terms of when you would need to apply to even utilize those days, it looks like it won't even be an option for school districts until the 2020-2021 school year. And there's all sorts of considerations in terms of if a school were to try and provide it through technology. There are requirements of ensuring that all students would be able to access that technology and a lot of considerations, but it's received a fair amount of attention. It is not something that is just automatically available. Like I said, it's something that schools will need to really plan for and apply for if they are considering it, but it will potentially be an option moving forward. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Yeah, just one question, and I understand you might have to explore the answer. For the requirements for trauma-informed, and this is something that we'll be raising in Safe Schools Committee, but interested to know how that applies to security staff, those who are non-instructional or admin positions.
I will double-check it just to make sure. From what I read over the past week, there were specific references to professional employees, which would be our teaching staff and not necessarily support staff. You know, the statute always provides or imposes the minimum, and school entities can always choose to go beyond that in terms of who is trained, the scope of that training. So my initial reaction is that I think some of the mandates are school board members and professional employees, but I can certainly check to see, you know, if it goes beyond that. And the school district could provide training beyond that as well.
Kyle, sorry. I was just going to ask too. I assume those trainings are open to any sitting board members as well, even if we were, you know, not required to take them.
I would imagine so, and they are at no cost. The PDE, the Department of Education, is responsible for developing them.
Is that only elected, or is it if we're in an appointment position as well?
It is. The requirement is for both newly elected, re-elected, and appointed board members within a certain window of time to complete the training.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Has the state outlined guidelines regarding the lunches, as to what that alternate lunch would look like?
Sure.
Like what's required in districts, and are districts needing to outline that as well?
I don't believe that there's guidelines about what an alternative lunch contains. The purpose for the change in the law was that there's a prohibition against identifying students who didn't have the financial means to pay for a lunch, and you couldn't single them out. And so one of the concerns was, was having a, I'll say, more basic lunch option available. If that was the only option for a student who maybe didn't have funds that day to pay for lunch, was that singling the student out by requiring them to have that lunch? And the legislature made it clear moving forward that that is not single, that doesn't constitute singling them out. Again, every district, you know, can choose not to impose that alternative lunch. And North Penn does have a policy and guidelines regarding that issue, but I don't know of any guidelines from the state that says, here's what an alternative lunch needs to contain.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Alright, we're going to move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the gifts to the district as listed for July 18th, 2019.
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Ms. Ramich. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Recommend approval for the medical director, medical examiners, dental examiners, and medical dental clerk, with the associated pay rates listed for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. G, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any discussion?
I just have two quick comments. I wanted to thank Ruth Desiderio for stepping up to the plate twice now for us in our time of need, and thrilled to see that this is going to be finally a permanent position for you. And also just wanted to comment that when I got Dr. McHugh's email last week about recommended candidates, I was so excited because I saw one of our all-stars there in the back, Dr. Waters, being recommended for Director of Curriculum, and then I thought, oh my gosh, what are we going to do for Hatfield? And I thought maybe we'd see some of your staff here telling us that public comment not to let you go. But truly, that is going to be a very bittersweet moment for Hatfield. We're thrilled to see you coming up to the Central Office here, but you've done amazing things at Hatfield for a long time, and you're going to be missed there. You've definitely left your mark, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Congratulations Ruth, congratulations Deanna. Anything else?
I would just say that the process that they both needed to go through for these positions, moving into a cabinet-level position, you know, it's rigorous, and they had to go against, you know, many very qualified candidates, and it's certainly very deserving. So thank you both for stepping up and excited about your leadership in the district and becoming part of the team at Central at May.
So once again, the motion was by Ms. G, seconded by Ms. Ott. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
Recommend approval of the contracts for the district as listed for July 18th, 2019. Copies are on file in the business office.
Motion by Mr. McBane, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements as per those listed, and copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Recommend approval of the Adoption of Board Policies 301 regarding creating a new position, 304 regarding employment of district staff, 304.1 regarding nepotism, and 309 regarding assignment and transfer.
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Anyone against this? Drawing a blank here. Alright, motion carries.
And with that, we need to repeal the previous policies which were in place, and those are recommending approval to repeal Policies 4111, selection and appointment of staff, 4111.1 regarding recruitment and selection, 411.2 regarding nepotism and posting of open positions and transfers.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. G, seconded by Ms. Ramich. Questions? Thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Recommend approval of the attached revised stipulation agreement with the Houston Equities II LP concerning properties located at 1510 Cow Path Road, condo 1, the associated tax parcel, 1530 Cow Path Road, condo 2, the associated tax parcel, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the attached revised stipulation agreement.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. G, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Oh, Mr. McBane, sorry. A man's voice from the right. All, discussion, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Recommend approval of the attached stipulation agreement with Montgomery Office Plaza and Upper Hanover TIDA concerning the property located at 587 Bethlehem Pike, Montgomery Township, the associated tax parcel, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the attached stipulation agreement.
Can I motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
Recommend approval of the attached stipulation agreement with Montgomery Office Plaza and Abington TICDA concerning the property located at 589 Bethlehem Pike, Montgomery Township, the associated tax parcel, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the attached stipulation agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Recommend the ratification of the 2019-20 general insurance package policy and student accident insurance in the amount of $574,041, as per the attached list of annual premiums, three bonds at a cost of $75 each, and camp insurance at a cost of $4,140.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. McBane. Questions or comments?
Steve, could you just talk about, a little bit about the, how we shop these quotes or what our process is?
Sure. Our insurance broker did a full RFP for proposals, and CM Region used to be affiliated with PSBA. They came back with a very competitive quote. So we went back and forth with the incumbent and with CM Region, and ultimately that continued to knock down the premium for the school district, which was an excellent situation. So from where we started and where our premium was in the previous year, we were able to drive down that premium through that RFP process that was conducted by the broker. So we are making a change. We were with the prior carrier for a two-year period, so we've transitioned now over to a new carrier. And I'm pleased to report that any defense that is needed in employment matters or special education matters, our solicitor, Mr. Summers, will be representing our district through the insurance company, since Mr. Summers' firm, Sweet Stevens, is on the approval list through CM Region.
Steve, just a follow-up question. Thank you, Mr. D'Azio, for that point. I just am wondering how, what our commitment is, like we had a two-year contract before, and our premium, I mean, they knocked the premium down. It can't go up then next, I mean, I guess it could, but...
It could, right. This is actually a one-year contract, so even though we were at the previous firm for a two-year period, each year was a separate contract in and of itself. So each year, our broker actually goes out to the marketplace and conducts an RFP to get proposals back. So that'll be done again next year.
Okay, thank you.
As long as our claims continue to be low, that helps drive down our premiums.
Well done for you and your team, as always. Thank you, Skrocky. And your thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Alright, and with that, Mr. Skrocky, we're on to the Finance Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fusco. Couple of quick updates. Mr. Summers talked about some of the state budget updates. I'll talk about the funding at the state level. That's been finalized now. Our basic education funding for the upcoming fiscal year will be slightly over $11 million. We received a $473,000 increase, almost four and a half percent in our basic ed funding, so that's great news. The bad news is unfortunately it's about $18,000 less than what we budgeted. There were some last-minute changes with the governor's budgeted and resulted in about $18,000 less. So we'll start out the year a little bit behind on our basic ed funding, but still a four and a half percent increase is awesome. Special education funding will receive about $6.6 million next year. That's about an $88,000 increase, only 1.35% in special education. As we discussed in previous Finance Committee meetings, we know our special education costs are rising much higher than 1.35%. And finally, the Ready to Learn Grant, $577,000. That's the exact same amount as the previous year. I want to remind all the property owners in North Penn School District, all the tax bills were mailed out and should have been in mailboxes right on July 1st or shortly thereafter. If you have not received your tax bill at this point in time, please contact your elected tax collector in the municipality in which you live. Failure to receive your bill is not an excuse for non-payment. Also, if anyone likes, would like to take advantage of our installment plan for the taxes, the first installment is due by August 1st. And also a reminder, the 2% discount, that period ends on August 31st of this year. Most of our taxpayers do take advantage of the 2% discount. And finally, the tax rebate program is in full swing. For the 1920 year, we received over 90 applications already in the first two weeks, which is incredible for a two-week period. So we'll be processing those applications and giving you updates in terms of the dollars that have been remitted. So lots of interest this year, a lot more than last year. Clearly, that's a reflection of the expansion, I'm sure. In terms of the Treasurers Report, this report is for the month of June 2019. Our receipts in June totaled $9.8 million. Our disbursements for the month totaled $35.9 million. And our available cash at the end of the month was $66.2 million, and that's roughly a $2.4 million increase over the same period last year. So I recommend approval of the Treasurers Report for the month of June 2019, please.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Ms. Ramich. Any other thoughts or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, next item, we have the sanction and approval of invoices. I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of June 2019 in the amount of
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so moved.
Okay, and next up, budget transfers. For the month of June 2019, I recommend approval of the budget transfers in the amount of $114,063.70.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any thoughts or comments? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And finally, we do have posted the monthly financial reports for the month of June, which I summarize as part of the Finance Committee. Even though our committee meeting was canceled for July, there were copious notes relative to those reports. So the 1819 fiscal year, still looks like we're in good shape to be able to recommend a transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund of at least a million dollars. We spent less money than what was budgeted, and we brought in more money than was budgeted on the revenue side. So we're getting ready for our 2018-19 audit, and when we have firmer numbers, as part of the audit process, we'll be bringing forward that recommendation, probably in the September or October board meeting. Finance Committee first.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. We are now going to, does anyone have any other business? In that case, we're going to once again open up the floor to the audience. If anybody wishes to address the board, this is your second opportunity to come forward. Alright. If that's the case, then I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Alright, there it is. Thank you.